In the spring. Clearly laid out what those changes are and then let people make a decision then. And that's why I see that.
Wouldn't it be easier just to identify the substantive changes and bring those back and put them before the people to undo them?
No, because I think...
Then you've still got a document that is better organized, better formatted.
I agree with you that it is better organized and better formatted.
And I agree with you.
If you look at it from the standpoint of, try to put your mind to, okay, I'm a homeowner, a business owner, I want to do X. And look at the old bylaw. And look at the zone that you're in. And see if it answered your question. And look at the new one. Again, earth removal is listed as an industrial activity, but it's not allowed in the industrial zone. Now explain that to me. Doesn't make sense?
I think that the, I guess I take it from this position. It came out pretty close to after spring town meeting that it was substantive. And so there has been several months for Meagan to have drafted a motion for town meeting to correct those issues. And instead of doing that, there's more changes, as if everything's fine and it's going to go through. And, you know, so there was an opportunity to come back to the town at this meeting and say, these are the substantive changes that occurred, and this is the explanation. But we weren't provided that. So for that reason, I think we need to go back and just put, all we're doing is putting a hold on it for now. We're not enacting it right now. We're going to give now another six months for the explanations to be played out, because they weren't played out in the last six months.
So I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen support Article 29 at town meeting.
I'll second.
Just one last item of discussion. I was not intending to kind of belabor this point or anything tonight. I just, you know, would rather target the areas that we disagree with rather than going back, because I don't believe... Is this affected immediately upon passage? And is that even appropriate or legal, is the question?
It rescinds the vote.
It rescinds the vote. So it would then just put us back to where we were?
That's correct.
Right, right.
Empty. And I've notified the people who have other changes in the zoning bylaws. And I told them they need to make reference in the motion, because they will come after this one.
Right.
So their motion should have the caveat that if this article is approved by town meeting and accepted by the Attorney General's office, then the references in theirs will be paragraph X instead of what?
Right, okay. All right, I'll call for a vote. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of favorable recommendation on Article, what number am I on? Twenty-nine?
Twenty-one.
Aye.
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 Aye. And, uh, nay.
Okay. So four one.
That's Kim just left, right?
Right. She says she's going to take the minutes from the, uh, from the tape.
Okay.
But I'll just...
Article 30, citizen petition to amend the zoning bylaws relative to enforcement. Does this not, would this not be directly addressed by a rescission?
Yes, yes. That's why I could disperse.
I mean, this is, this is unneeded.
Yeah.
We should then pass Article 30 completely.
Not necessarily. We can vote that too, in case for some reason the AG's office said we can't do this.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you lose nothing, right?
I move a favorable recommendation on Article 30.
Second.
Just discussion on this one? Anything?
Uh, Peter, just a, okay. I'm sorry, withdraw.
Peter, read this one here.
Which one?
The thirty?
No.
Oh, all right, okay.
Do you have any comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I can speak louder.
Well, I'd like the folks at home to be able to hear you and see you.
Let's see. I, uh, I proposed this amendment to the zoning bylaws for really three reasons. One reason is one of the tasks of the Board of Selectmen is to appoint town council. And town council works for you and, as well as for the town. And with most zoning issues, not all, but with most zoning issues where there is a question about enforcement, they generally lead to legal action. And I would much prefer to have my five elected selectmen make the determination as to, do they want to use the hammer and enforce? Do they want to negotiate and work out a system with people in the town? The second reason that I proposed this change is that it was alleged to be no change at all. That's not so. The change in the recently codified bylaw makes the building inspector and zoning inspector now the zoning enforcement officer. And that's not what was reported at town meeting. The, um, the third reason is two years ago, the administration proposed this very same change at town meeting. And my memory system says, because I stood up and spoke against it for the same reason I stated to begin with, uh, my, my memory system says that that proposed bylaw amendment was in fact defeated unanimously.
The other issue that I raised at that town meeting, and I'll raise it again. We hire building inspectors for their knowledge of building, not their knowledge of zoning. Now, it has been said by others that the building inspector is the point man in zoning enforcement. Yes, exactly. The building inspector, if there's an issue of setback requirements, we send the building inspector out to measure. When you apply for a permit or something, the building inspector checks the zoning map to see if the, if it's in the right zoning area. So that's not zoning enforcement.
He's more the investigator.
More the investigator, yes. It was someone else, some citizen, who pointed out to me that as a citizen, he would rather take his chance with five elected people on a zoning issue than one building inspector. You know, just as a matter of... Yeah. Part-time. Now, it was said, um, that this had to be done to comply with state law. But that's not what the state law says. And the Attorney General Office approved all our zoning bylaws, which named the Board of Selectmen the zoning enforcement officer. And if for some reason it was true that state law requires a building inspector to be zoning enforcement officer, we wouldn't need to change the bylaw, because it would be automatic by operation of law.
State law provides options.
No, I know that.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion on the table.
Any other discussion? You look like you were ready to say something. Anyone want to call for the vote?
I'm kind of playing clerk here, too.
All in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Janitors. The hour is now ten twenty. We can continue on with your remaining eleven articles. We can move on on the agenda, or we can move into executive session. Do I see nothing else?
I'd rather move on with the agenda. I mean, forget the, um...
The next eleven.
Yeah. Let's go with the regular agenda.
Okay.
Finish that up.
Okay. All right. So Carrie, you can note, we left off on thirty.
Correct, yes.
And pick up on thirty-one at our next meeting.
You say we're right going to do them all up one night anyway.
No, I said town meetings I can do them all one night.
No, I mean, we talked about it.
Okay.
At least, that's what I meant.
I noticed town meetings I can do it all one night either, so. Something will follow. Okay. All right, let's see. Board of Selectmen policies, suggested language needed for Board of Selectmen meeting notification to interested persons or persons involved in an agenda topic. And, uh, as it's come up tonight, I mean, it's something that we need to get better at, you know, as a board and as a staff. You know, I think what needs to happen, in my opinion, is just a simple checklist be developed. And here are the things that you do when finalizing the agenda. And, you know, as soon as there's even an inkling that someone may appear on the agenda, I think as a courtesy, you put a phone call and if you have an email address as well, but you do both into them. And then once the agenda is finalized, and which is, we've been shooting for Thursdays now, or earlier, make sure we get in touch with people. But, I mean, are there things other than that that we could be doing?
Well, yeah, there's two sides to it, I think. And we've talked about the other side as well. I know Bruce has brought it up a couple of times, and we sort of danced around it. When something ultimately has a decision at the Board of Selectmen's table, it would sort of be useful to us to know that staff is working in the background to prepare something, you know, whether it's a category two license or any other license action that's going to end up at this table. You know, maybe on every two weeks or on a regular basis, if we just had a flow chart, you know, here are the actions that came in. This is the status of the action, so we don't have to guess and go looking around. You know, I was surprised, what, a week, two weeks ago, to find out Mr. Farrar had pulled his license request before it ever got to us. And, you know, why? And I'm sort of, you know...
And that one's only getting off again a couple of times, though. And I think it's...
Well, he just got fed up. He got disgusted and he went somewhere else.
Yeah, it's, you know, ultimately, if the decision has to be made here, we do need to know that it's floating around in the background. I mean, I want to trust staff to do staff work and present us with a process. I don't want to interfere with the staff work. But it'd be a good idea to know what's out there and what's coming our way.
You have to know what's out there and what's coming out, otherwise you cannot...
And if it gets stalled someplace, then maybe we could kick somebody in the butt to get it moving. So we don't have a case where it's withdrawn.
I still don't have an answer on my truck's down at BJ's warehouse. They're still there. I went this weekend.
David, you were researching that first.
I was.
Is the staff work done?
Uh, the staff work is mainly complete. I'm just looking to get some additional verification about the garage and walk out in, I believe we were looking at Maryland.
Maryland, right.
Um, the initial thought process, looking at the state law, is the fact that because the corporation is based in Maryland, they're going to all have Maryland plates. But I'm looking for confirmation on that in Maryland's state law.
They have one Connecticut, too, so, you know, they're based in Maryland, Connecticut, you know, it's still, there's still garage hits.
It's, uh, principal garage shift has different interpretations state by state. So I'm looking for something a little further in Maryland that will back that up.
Yeah, you know, Dave, I was thinking about this particular issue, because a friend and I were talking about professional sports contracts now. Like, you know, I play for the Boston Red Sox, but I play a game in California against the Angels. The portion of my salary I've earned while I was in California, I actually have to pay California taxes on, believe it or not. And, you know, even though I'm paid by the Red Sox in Massachusetts, and so I can't even imagine how complex it is, because you play 162 games, you've got 25 players on the team, all making, with different contracts, you know, and it's going to be a nightmare for them to do that. But I was just trying to draw some analogies as to those assets that are registered and, you know, owned by a company in Maryland, is there anything applicable that would allow us to recover some revenue while their useful life is being mostly used here in Pittsburgh?
Yeah, well, there isn't a lot of money off that.
Well, the question is, does it, does it fall on physical presence or state of registry?
And Massachusetts is physical presence.
Yes.
But that's not necessarily the same across...
Interstate commerce laws.
Right, absolutely. So...
Hey, but I mean, that's, that's off topic, but I...
I don't know, I just, I just went, keep an eye on it, and I think...
But what sparked this, though, was commentary being kept abreast of, you know, items that staff is working on or that are on the radar screen. And maybe we could just have, in fact, one of the managers that I worked for used to have a radar report, he called it. And as we were working on projects, as we saw things that, you know, he may need to take action on a month or two, we'd put on the radar report, you know, and, and he would read through the report, and if he didn't understand what the issue was, he would tap on his shoulder and ask you for more details. Otherwise, he'd say, okay, I know that at some point the customer's going to come to me to talk about, you know, a certain, you know, item. So maybe we need a radar report. You know, here are the pending permit applications that are being worked on.
Well, when you're saying that, again, I talked to the town clerk. I don't think it was my job to talk to the town clerk, but I did talk to the town clerk, and I haven't suddenly come in and give him a price on the books, history books that are in there. But, uh, that's where that is.
I would recommend that we put it on either one of two places. We create an area actually on our agenda, so the public is aware that once they bring something before us, that it's still on our radar screen. Or two, it actually goes in the manager's report that they give to us monthly?
That's probably a more appropriate place, and that would be posted to the web as well, and...
Because Jill said that anytime we actually ask for something, we're, in theory, we're asking the town manager, who then turns around and redelegates it. So just have a section of her report, and then that way we can see from month to month that until it actually gets voted and is put on our agenda, it stays on her manager's report. So at least once a month, we're getting a written update on the status until it's officially...
And, you know, just parallel to that also, I want to reinforce the practice for a while there of action items from Selectmen meeting, you know, being bold-faced and different font, that kind of thing, in the minutes, too. So it keeps it fresh and out of minds, too, that we're expecting, you know, some feedback as well, so.
Let's make sure we don't add extra work for people, so that whatever we do, we don't, we want to try to make it...
Well, it's been an easy byproduct of what they're doing.
Okay.
It's really what it comes down to.
Right, I mean, it could be as simple as, like, an area, action, um, action items requested by BOs could be a category within the manager's report, and it could all be bullets. It could say BJ's Trucks, um, last update from Dave on X date. It can just be, so we'll know at least...
If Kim does this stuff as a matter of routine...
Correct.
Then we're adding, adding an element, because we're having Kim transfer this information to the town manager, and we're going to put it in the report. If Kim has a file that she lists different applications for licenses that the board is responsible for, for instance, um, if she makes a copy or has that file in a certain place, and you go in, let me look at the pending license application file. That way, there's no extra work.
Well, there would be no extra work if she just makes an attachment, then, it doesn't have to be in a particular format, just having an attachment to the manager's report.
The work is in typing it. This way, there is no extra work.
She's already typing it in already. All you're, we're talking about computers here, so all you're talking about is one file, where she, all she then does is just takes that worksheet of that Excel spreadsheet, and she just copied, pasted it over.
Yeah, all right.
We're talking about click.
Yeah, I want to be cognizant of not adding a lot of...
Right, and I agree with what you're saying, so...
So whatever we ask them to do, let them know what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. And if there's an easier way to accomplish it, tell us, and, you know...
Carrie, will you take the lead on this and just kind of maybe summarize some thoughts here, and then bring it back to the board next time?
Okay.
And just kind of kick it on a little bit more?
Sure.
I just talk to Kim, and let her know what they're looking for.
Okay, so we're looking for...
And what's the easiest way for us to keep abreast of applications that come in for the board?
That only addresses one piece of the communication out here. That addresses the internal communications, but we're also, we need to address the external communications, too, people who are going to be, who need to be here.
Yes, that's a separate issue.
So we're creating a checklist for the agenda items to make sure that issues are, we're doing something for the agenda items, some type of checklist to make sure that all the stuff is covered for the agenda. And then we're also doing some way of issues that are identified during our meetings that they don't fall through, but they're... Now, would it be, in order to make sure that they don't fall through, would it be appropriate for us to take a vote that we then, like, so it's very clear that we are then requesting this action be done? Would we actually take a vote to appropriate the town manager to fall through with certain actions? So then it's actually, we're doing action motions?
But if you can get it to a place where you're going to have a thousand votes on, on...
See, most of the action items result from votes that we take, I mean, typically.
But there has been some action items, though, that...
Yeah, we have things to be done.
Things have been done, and we didn't even take a motion.
But you just need to make a notation of it. It would also be very helpful if, when you prepare the agenda, if you have, for instance, Attorney Mark, whatever his name in Northwood, if you would talk with him, either by phone or meet with him, and say, okay, what is it you're looking for? How much time do you expect to take? So that when you put the agenda together, you have some sense of what things are. And for someone like him, in his issue, it would have been a lot easier if he submitted in advance of the meeting. To say, this is something they've been thinking about for a while, a little memorandum of what it is they're looking for, and the justification for it.
I hate to tell a little story, Kevin, but on my way here to the meeting tonight, I almost witnessed a guy get hit in the crosswalk, because there was no crosswalk left. You know, right at the lights right here? If you look right there, the crosswalk going that way, the crosswalk going that way, there's no crosswalk there. And I almost, I almost saw a guy get hit. I was at the stoplight. He went right by my car, and after he went by my car, somebody almost came and hit him, because you couldn't see the crosswalk. Now, to me, that's a public safety thing, and I've been trying to say that. They seriously need to look at the crosswalks in there, because the one right out here...
Make sure you get in touch with Public Safety Committee and raise those issues. I mean, I've raised intersection issues before that were ultimately addressed, like, for example, Chalk Lot Road and Quaker Highway. You know, that eventually got escalated to, you know, Mass Highway did something about it and reconfigured it after.
But that, I, I almost saw something get hit right tonight. I mean, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up before, but there's no crosswalk left. There's no light at all.
Um, just, so, I mean, they have put, they have been putting up additional state law orange cones. We saw, I mean, if anyone's gone down to sixteen, there's now one in front of the church, and actually, somebody's already hit the cone. I've already had to move it back to where it was supposed to be. Somebody's already nailed it, but...
If you look at that light there...
So in this article, Carrie, you're going to take the lead, just pull, you know, kind of summarize some thoughts, and then sit down with Kim. I mean, what we should do as practice, though, as we talk about things here, and when Kim is keeping the minutes, we should say, please add an action item. I mean, use that language specifically, because it may not be a motion, but, you know, please note an action item in the minutes that we would, you know, like proposal for record storage from the town clerk's office, for example.
And should we also, when we say that, timeframe it?
Of course, yeah.
Would we specifically say, well, that's something that we're not doing, say, you know...
If it's time-sensitive.
Right. We would like an answer back on this by X amount of days. Just, you know, by our next meeting, we want some type of answer. There are been things that we've, we've action items, but we haven't set any timeframe.
No, I agree with you.
So they may be working on it, and it could be six months before we get the answer back, not that it, just because other things keep coming up. Um, so we, in a sense, we're then saying whether this is a priority or not, and that way they'll know. We may say, this is low on the poll, total poll.
Right, that makes sense.
So kind of get in the habit that there will be timeframes on some things, and other things are the ones that you could push to the side if something pressing comes up.
Okay.
When, um, when town officials come to the board for something, and they expect it to result in some vote, we should ask them to prepare...
A motion.
The motion. So we know exactly, you know, they know exactly what they need, and we won't...
Well, in most cases, you know, for example, if it was the chief, the chief police comes to us a couple of times, you know, he needs a motion to enter into some type of, you know, agreement or whatever the case may be. They've done that, though. But, you know, where it requires deliberation, I mean, it's almost a waste of effort for someone to prepare a motion that we're going to deliberate on and may tweak, you know?
Yeah, but at least they have a suggested motion going in on, because otherwise, there might be some things that we have to include in.
Sure. I think our department has been pretty good at doing that when we asked for action, but it's a good point, though. All right, next item, placing all employee contracts and letters of employment agreements on the website, including the school committee. Again, this was at Carrie's request. This has come up before, actually, in, you know, a letter to the town manager, as a matter of fact. You know, I certainly have no opposition to any town employment agreements being placed on the website. I would just defer to the school committee, just out of respect for the school committee. And I would, I would challenge them to do that, but I would defer to them to...
Well, the reason why, um, this was a citizen request, that this has come up before, it's been discussed, but if we could take a formal motion, that this isn't something that we do, or, you know, do we or do we not want the town contracts? And then does the board want to take a final, uh, the attempt was not to tell the school committee what to do, but the question was, was the board going to formally ask the school committee to follow the suit of the town if we so choose that? Do you guys follow me on that?
Yes, sir.
You know, so it's not a matter of, you know, one of us as a citizen approaching the school committee and asking for it is, does the board want to ask the school committee? And we may not want to, but all I'm saying is, it was, that's the idea, is the board want officially to ask the school committee yes or no.
I believe the same citizen request handled both municipal and school contracts. Did it not?
I don't know, I wasn't aware of one.
The town, the town contract has to have copies of all contracts, otherwise they won't write a check.
Right, of course.
So, you know, they have them, you can put them on the town website, you don't need anybody's permission, and they're not secret documents.
No, of course.
I have a question. Do we have any space limitations on the website?
Well, and that's...
Do we incur costs, you know, if we...
I know we're changing platforms, but even right now, I don't believe that that's going to be an issue, right?
That's not, that's not an issue. Really, organization of the site has more of an issue.
Okay.
The town manager did, I, um, she did say that it was a plan to do, and they, the idea was to wait for the new website to come. So that's why the question, I guess, before the board is, is do we want to make a motion that it actually happens before the new website is up? Or does it matter? Or, you know, I think that it's just been something that's been floating around.
It is duplicate effort, I mean, to upload them once and create the links and all that kind of stuff, and then, and then have a second website and then do it all over again? If we're not that far away from a new website, I would say, we've waited this long, that just, you know, wait till the new platform is up and do it once. But if we're six months to a year away, then I, you know, so do we have a sense for when we'll be on a new platform?
Um, I think, I think there's not a lot of time. We're, we're getting there, it's going to be, it's basically a hybrid virtual town hall software, so that's coming soon, but we could, you know, we could certainly report back as to what the estimated time is. But right now, it's, it's not looking like it's too far away.
Is it the plan to put, to scan the actual signed contracts or just, you know, transfer the Word document?
The only legally binding documents would be the signed bylaws.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
If anybody wants them that bad, they can come right in and get them.
Oh, yeah, I'm just trying to see whether the quality of the, if you can read it-
Scan it?
-easier if it's-
Oh, if it's a Word document as opposed to a scan, I mean, quality-wise.
Yeah.
And it may be a case-by-case basis, I mean, we should try, we should try to make sure we have the most legible copy available, and if a scanned copy is fine, I would be in favor of scanning the actual document, otherwise provide the text version.
It's a lot of work, it's easier to scan it.
Keep in mind, contracts are renewed, renegotiated, in which, you know, you can have dozens of contracts online. That means every time we change a contract, now we have an extra stack-
Updated online.
...uploading it online, you know?
Same as appointments.
I mean, it's real work, it's, it's not a huge amount of work, but it is real work.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is, it is-
Well, everything we do is, is work.
You know, and, and to that point, then, um, there may want to be a disclaimer on the website saying that-
Official documents are-
Officially documents can be found, just like they do with the bylaws.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want the true official bylaw, you go to town hall and look at the hard copy, don't just rely-
These documents are provided as a courtesy or a means or whatever, but true and actual documents can only be found.
That way, if, when they come up for renewal, we're not under the gun because it's three months later and the old contract's still in the system, when in fact, it's actually, the new contract is in fact filed, it's just, it's paperwork issue that hasn't been clarified, yes.
So, is it the board's position, first of all, that we're in favor of all municipal contracts being on, on the web?
General motion is-
Yeah, sure.
Except, except the school contract.
Well, we'll address that second.
Employee contracts.
I-
I mean, we have contracts for copy machines and contracts for-
Correct.
-oil and, you know-
Right, employment.
Right, yeah.
I move that, um, all municipal contracts and, uh, letters of employment agreements, um-
And also, um, appointments.
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 Yeah.
Um, and appointments be, um, available, um, on the town website, pending, um, the installation of the new-
Platform.
Platform, thank you.
Second. You get the discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Genuine. I mean, we should address the, the, uh, school committee, uh, contracts as well and, and appointments. Um, I personally am of the mind that, I think we lead by example. Um, I, you know, I, I respect the fact that their budget is handled very differently, I, I respect the fact that their administration's handled very differently, and I would defer to them to make this decision for their own documents, but I would encourage them to do that, but, um, I, I personally respect the delineation. I mean, you have a leg in, in kind of in both clubs here, so what are your thoughts, Peter?
I have no objection to putting everything on, I mean, they're all public documents.
No, I understand that.
Just make it easier for people to access documents that they might want to access, and really saving the time of the town accountant's office, and just people coming into town account, giving you copy of this contract, that contract, it's online.
But, but do you feel comfortable in, in having this board say that all the school committee's documents, um, should be on the web? Or do you feel more comfortable saying that on Tuesday night, tomorrow night?
I don't have an opinion either way. I mean, you know, I'll bring it up.
Were you, were you asking for a gen item to discuss them? Okay.
Um, I guess my question is, Mr. Chairman, do we want to take a motion that this board officially asks that board to follow the, the, the town lead? Um, or do we-
Leave it at that.
Or do we want to officially ask them, or do we just want to leave it as it is right now? They may or may not even take it up as a consideration.
I mean, quite frankly, this, this board could post them anyway, you know, they're, they're all town documents. Um, I, I just, I don't want to make a political issue out of this, I just want to, you know, defer to their judgment on this, in my opinion.
Yeah, just leave it at that, whatever they want.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make any political statement, I'm just asking, do we want to-
Is the municipal employee?
I'm sorry?
Is the superintendent the town employee?
Yeah, sure. Sure, there's, there's one checkbook.
The motion you made before was from the school town employee?
Well, I mean, there's, there's one checkbook, I, I just would want to allow them to at least have this type of discussion if they're taking it. And Peter said he would request that a gen item would be there, so. Item three, Mike, you want to talk about the proposed board's second meeting?
Yes, I'm very disappointed. I went before this meeting started into the policy books in the other room, and I cannot find where there's a written policy that we end at 10 o'clock. So we need to establish a written policy that we end at 10 o'clock in the future, and that anything that's still pending gets pushed over, it's Tuesday night.
Uh, I don't like that idea.
I mean, you have to do the business. So either sit here until 1:00 in the morning or come back the following night.
Personally, I'd rather, I'd rather stay and tackle as much as possible, and if we don't finish it, then we push it to the next meeting, but we-
But you have a constant snowball in your face.
Absolutely.
Over the years, it'll get so big, not-
Well, and I think that that would, there, we're taking baby steps here, we're not taking giant steps, and I think cutting the amount of time that we spend on Citizens Forum and kind of like rearranging our schedule, I think we did well in getting people in and out, and if we stay on top of that, we should be able to get our meetings as close to 10 o'clock as we can, but I would hate to say we have to stop at 10 o'clock and come back Tuesday night for an hour.
Keep in mind, we can always, you know, suspend any policy by a majority vote.
Yeah.
So if there's an issue, it's 10 o'clock, we have, we can finish it up in 10 more minutes, we're obviously going to stay and finish it up, we're not going to go home and come back.
How about this? I want a motion that the board adopt a policy where we try to structure the agenda to conduct all business by 10 o'clock. Um, at 9:45, the chair will call for, you know, ask the board to weigh in on whether we want to continue discussions for that evening or, or wrap up at 10 o'clock.
That's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
I mean, it's simple enough and it's common sense, because there are things we absolutely have to get done that, well, 10 o'clock, coffee break time, I mean, you know, so, yeah.
And we can do that if, if you talk to people going on the agenda and get a sense of how much time-
In time, in time, absolutely.
Yeah, listen to them.
All right, all right. Okay.
And no show and tell.
Are you actually going to do a motion accepting that as a policy to be written, or are we just-
We'll go by key sentences.
Okay.
See how it works, then you guys can beat me up some more on this. All right. Uh, we addressed the street intention to lay out and make public FY10 budget preview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right on schedule, Tim.
Absolutely. Due to the lateness of the hour, I don't, I won't spend a lot of time on this at this point, but I just wanted to take a couple of, couple of minutes, go over with the board what's already been presented to the finance committee regarding the initial revenue projections for fiscal 2010, add a few other caveats on there that have, that have come up since, that being the, uh, the governor making commentary about, about the budget cuts that he's going to have to enact based on the shortfall of revenue on the state side of things, which may or may not affect us in 2009, but will probably affect our projections for fiscal 2010. Um, we have a very, we have a conservative projection that's been put forward so far, but the way the economy's going right now, pretty much all bets are off. Um, but, and I cannot find that thing in the packet.
It's below the two.
Every other piece, every other piece of information, but, I mean, the bottom line of what we're looking at so far is the revenue projections are showing that if they, if, if they hold up, we're barely going to be able to cover our fixed cost increase, that being health insurance, retirement, and the projection of BVT. Um, so, this is before we do any adjustments for what the governor's talking about, before we, we do any other adjustments regarding the, regarding any of our local, local projections, uh, which I think most of the local receipts are pretty well dead on. The assessor, the assessor did cut about $200,000 off of his growth estimate, um, we did pare down about $40,000 off his growth estimate for this fiscal year, but fortunately, some of the transfers that you're already seeing on the warrant will cover that difference, so the budget will remain in balance. However, for 2010, we're looking at splitting revenue of approximately $945,000, if memory serves. That's not going to cover those fixed costs, so, without being able to really change the elements of those plans all that much, um, this is just, this is just pretty much a notification to the board that we're probably going to be looking at further reductions for fiscal 2010. And, um, one thing that I could certainly use some guidance on from the board is, if we have to be looking at that, especially on the municipal side, we have to start making priorities as to what we're going to preserve and what we're not going to preserve if we're going to live within our means. Um, so, that's, I mean, that's really it in a nutshell for 2010.
Did you factor any question one into your calculations yet?
Um, I'd rather not, because we, we cannot even predict what will happen if that actually comes out, or if, if, if they actually find a way not to get around it if it passes. But right now, it's, it's already looking a little bit grim, um, based on what's going on on the state level.
David, when the houses go into foreclosure-
Yep.
Uh, do banks continue to make the tax payments?
Yes.
They do?
By and large, if they have, if they actually have, have an escrow on it, they will. However, as more and more of this inventory stacks up, it gets easier for them not to make the payments. Uh, but generally, most of them will pay.
And the tax lien is always the first lien, the first priority lien, even before any other-
Yeah.
-secondary, tertiary liens.
It is.
Right? So we get paid first, but-
But when a bank is looking at a mortgage that they're owed and the value isn't there, um, what's a few thousand dollars in taxes? I mean, they don't care.
Well, that, it will certainly get to that point. I mean, the last time we were really seeing, you know, banks walking away from property to a, to a major degree like that was in 91 and 92, when it was, when it was everywhere.
Yeah.
Because the banks were failing as fast as the mortgages, the mortgagers were defaulting.
Yeah.
Um, but, we haven't seen it yet, but it's probably looming. Now, one of the things that we do with our budget is, is we do plan on collecting the tax levy, that's how the system works. We don't collect the entire tax levy, um, at any given point in time. We put the rest of it into tax title, where it then becomes an asset, and then we have tax title collections. Um, we did pretty well this year, although we were off a little bit in our collections, but on the tax title side, but that's another iffy part, part. You will only see that come up when we're certifying free cash. You won't see it through the budget process, um, it'll only come up then. And that's the concern that we're going to have going forward, that's just another thing to look at. Um, one of the things that I'm being told that a lot of people are looking at is the idea of using about a 7% reduction in state aid. Um, that's pretty major to us. We, we're still canvassing around a little bit to see whether or not that's going to be the final revenue projection, but at this-
Was that the memo from the governor's office that you placed in our packets?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, he's talking about a 7% on his office.
Reduction in his office, which kind of tripled it.
Yeah, it goes from there.
It's foreshadowing.
Absolutely. So, the big question right now for us is whether or not they're, they're going to actually affect 2009. A mid-year cut would be, would be pretty disastrous, because everything's already fixed, as far as we're concerned. You know, especially on the school side, teachers' contracts are already done, they're already employed, you can't lay off teachers in the middle of the year, it doesn't save you anything. But we don't, we haven't received any confirmation that that's going to happen for 2009, but it's pretty much a given that 2010, from, from a state aid standpoint, is not going to be too good.
I, I did just look, just yesterday or the day before, I looked at the, the state budget over the past five years, and there's been over a $6 billion increase in the state budget in the last five years, which means there's been over a $6 billion revenue growth in the last five years. Um, and I, I took a look at what happened with our Chapter 70 funding from the state. Our, um, five-year growth in Chapter 70 funding is just under 10%, whereas the state revenues grew 25, 26% over the same five years. So, so it, it's been this widening gulf as far as the revenue growth at the state level, yet what has made its way to us in Chapter 70 funding, which makes it, you know, difficult to fund schools, um, if, you know, we don't have a partner. And if you look also at the percentage, I think your, your annual budget statement talks about the percentage of, um, our budget that is generated with local receipts as opposed to state receipts, and that's, that's concerning, that that number continues to, you know, the percentage funded by the state is, keeps going down, so that, that's a challenge.
What is the, you had mentioned that, um, you know, if you lay off somebody and they're still in a contract, there's really no savings.
Correct.
Um, will we, will we have the protect, will we have definitive numbers from the state before we have to make those decisions on laying off, where we actually get a cost savings with that layoff?
Well, we're not going to see state projections till mid-January at the earliest.
Okay.
And that'll be the governor's first budget. Now, we were very fortunate with, with the new administration, in the, in as much as, when the governor's budget came out, it came out, I believe, January 25th, all the way through the end, it virtually did not change. There was movements between the lines, but in the end, I think overall, we got $6,000 more than we started with. Um, under the previous administration, you know, uh, it was all over the board. Governor came out with one version, then the House had another, then the Senate had yet another, and we had a moving target right till the end of the fiscal year. We're, we're hopeful that this, this will continue in as much where we'll get a number that we can pretty well bank on in January. It might be a little more problematic to do that this year, just because the state is so concerned about their revenue stream. They may be making adjustments as they go along, and I, I would assume that the, the governor's version of the budget will be the worst one coming out, because it's going to be the earliest one coming out. But any, any cuts that we have to make, we, um, we have to make well in advance of town meeting, you know, for the, for fiscal 2010. The school has their own deadlines as to, as to if they're laying off teachers, when they have to do that, um, that's in early June, so there's, there's, there's a whole hierarchy.
Right.
Nothing will help us for this fiscal year. If, if we wind up coming in $200,000 short, we're going to either have to find a revenue source to raise it from, or we're going to have to cut the majority of $200,000 from the municipal side. That's just how it is.
So, so we wouldn't even save on the healthcare costs of an employee if we, I mean, because if we lay off them, we may have to continue out their contract, but that includes all their health insurance and everything else, or don't they keep COBRA?
No, that would go, that would go to COBRA.
So we would have us-
But you're still paying, you're still paying their salary, even though they're not on great year.
So they don't collect unemployment?
They would not, they, um, I do not believe they would until the conclusion of the contract year. But you're still paying it out. You're already paying, if you're already paying a salary out for the whole year, you don't really get, the only benefit you get is the health insurance benefit by cutting it. Um, and for all the other, for, for everything else it causes, it's, you know, you've really got to question whether it's worth that particular effort.
Okay, and, and just so I'm clear, this is because of the way that we actually negotiate the contract? Because most people, when you're laid off, you're laid off and you go on unemployment. But this, this is because of the way we negotiated these union contracts as to why we have to pay out the term of the contract. pay out the term of the contract.
Um, I would, I would defer to the school business manager to make, make a commentary on that part of it. On the municipal side, we're employees at will.
Okay.
Period.
Okay, so this is only dealing...
This is only dealing with...
This doesn't deal with municipal contract?
No, no, no.
Like police department and...
Right. You can, you, and on the municipal, the only municipal contract that would be affected by this, to my knowledge, is the fire, that because there is, there is minimum man in clause within the fire contract. Everybody else on the municipal side is ripe for layoff if need be.
Okay. So, then under theory, under the municipal side, the, the last ones, in theory, we would want to lay off, because it would be the least value, would be the fire department? If to follow that, I mean, not that you want to lay off anybody, but if you, if you have to start cutting, because we have to all of a sudden come up with four, five, $600,000, you know, you're going to go where you're going to get your biggest bang.
Well, you generally start in public safety and you, you know, I mean, look at every budget we've talked about. The cuts are always in police and DPW. That's where they start. That's where you get the biggest bang for the buck. And then that, you know, after that, it diminishes greatly. I mean, the entire municipal budget is about $5 million, you know, out of a $34 million levy, that's not really, you know, there's not a rip, there's not a lot of options to go if you're trying to do everything on the municipal side.
I guess one question I have on the budget, and it's been something that I've heard a lot of other towns talk about, coming in the winter, they're projecting, well, if you've seen the squirrels out there collecting nuts, it looks like we're going in for a doozy of a winter.
Absolutely.
They're always collecting nuts.
The, are we, do you know if we're under set contracts for our sand and our salt, or could we see expenditures exceed our allotments on those? A couple of the towns, they're already, they're already budgeting $200, $300,000. They're trying to come up with that much money just to get sand and salt on their roads. They're anticipating that type of increase.
Right.
Have we done anything regarding that?
I believe all of our contracts are, are settled for the winter. I'm just a little iffy on the sand one. I do know that we covered everything else. But that's the only one that, that I'd have to get back to you on.
I know, I know, they, the salt, I don't think salt has a contract yet.
I thought, I thought...
They might, but it hasn't come in yet.
Right. You're right. I think, but I think we're, I think we're settled on it.
Yeah.
But I'd have to, I'd have to double check on that, to be sure.
If you could, yeah, because that would be something, I mean, we're not talking, from what I've heard, you know, other towns talk about, it's not like $10,000, $20,000. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars they expect to be off in these budgets. And that's not even talking about the additional plow trucks running. That's just the material.
Right. Absolutely.
If, if we're looking at a situation like that.
Okay.
Thank you for the happy news.
Sorry. Let's hope that truck brings in a lot of money.
All right. Just a couple of other items, a quick scheduled date for workshop on economic development objectives, 40T update, suggested for 10/20/08. We're not scheduled to have a meeting that day, we're scheduled for the 27th. Oh, right, 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 right.
Now, what is this for?
We had asked Megan to come in and kind of report to us, like it had started the discussions about what are we doing relative to economic development, and she came in, and I don't know that any of us...
Talked about radars, you know?
Yeah.
I remember.
Right. So, we agreed that we would help weigh in with our preferences as to economic development and focus and target and those types of things. Just, so she has a sense from the board as to our vision.
And, and what does that lead to?
Hopefully, an increased focus on aligning her factors with ours. I mean, I don't think we even know where each other stands, you know, as, you know, and it's just, I think it would be a good, healthy discussion for, I would say, no more than an hour, just to talk about, where do we see the town? You want light industrial, you know, I want, you know, office parks and malls, those types of things, but I mean...
I mean, the question, the question is, is she taking full advantage of the tools that are out there? You know, she's spending so much time being the director of planning and inspection services, she's forgotten that she's, that the economic development is her primary focus.
And what kind of tools are out there?
Um, well, 40T is one, and getting an update on, on where that goes. For instance, if the property owners and business owners down along Quaker Highway decide that they want to enhance the value and utility of their property, I think it's under 40T that they can self-organize and self-assess, and themselves pay the cost of bringing water and sewer down there, without it being levied against the town or against the ratepayers.
The last time we surveyed those people, you know, they've adjusted to what's there. They like to have water and sewer.
Well, that's, that's, you know, one of the big arguments about expanding the Rosenfeld Wellfield, that the fire chief actually came out, is that people down there are itching for that as a way of enhancing the value of their property, and so...
Yeah, well, we'll ask him again.
But it's something that she ought to be proactive about. In other words, she ought to be proactively reaching out to the business community in this town and finding out what needs to be done to make the town more business-friendly, rather than focus, you know, entirely on inspection services, which is not what the intent was. I mean, I've got a copy of the memo that we were given by the town manager that said this person's primary focus will be on economic development. It did, it did not tell us that she was being hired to oversee inspection services. There's a big disconnect between what we were promised and what's been delivered, and I think that's part of the discussion.
Yes.
You know, here's what we were promised, here's the expectation. Kevin made several observations, made observation, the same observation on several occasions, that there's a, a, a natural tension between planning and economic development, and having the same person do the same thing is counterproductive.
Yes.
And we're finding it to be counterproductive.
But that was always obvious.
Well, it wasn't obvious to certain other people around here that put this into play.
No, and, and I've said that on a number of pages. I think that's healthy contention, though, I think, between planning and, and economic development, you know. But I actually asked on this, and, you know, on combining those two positions into one, but, you know, I, I do think that is healthy contention.
Town planners don't plan, and town developers don't develop. I mean, that's, that's just how it is. You can name somebody something, but that doesn't accomplish something.
They fit all the inspection services all day.
Last week, I, you got window for someone, in fact, you got it from Bruce, and I followed up on it. Someone's trying to do something, you live in town, trying to, and every time they went upstairs, there was, oh, now we need this, so go back, okay, here's this. Oh, good, now I gotta have this, you know, and finally, they just...
We were promised time and again that there's a template that tells people, these are all the steps you need to go through in order to come to the end results you want.
Were you told that template was 427 pages long?
Is it?
No, I don't know.
I mean, but isn't it, I mean, how I kind of see it is, I understand what you're saying, you were, you were told that it, you know, basically the position was economic development was a position, not inspection.
Right.
But if you look at the overall, if you look at the overall scheme of the town and its direction, I mean, you have, you, you haven't even had, you have a board, you have a economic development commission.
No, you don't.
No.
That, you, you have, you have the ability to have one, but you only have one person right now who's even put in a talent bank to be on that board.
Because the previous experience was, it was starved to death.
Well, there are two different perspectives on that, though, Mike. You know, a different perspective, another one is that it was an advanced scouting mechanism for, for NIMBYs. So, you get on, on the economic development board, so you find out what business wants to come to town.
That's exactly how it works. And that's how we don't want most towns.
But you don't want that. You want, you want to bring business to town.
But I don't care what town you go to, that's exactly how it works. People get on it, because they want to know what's going to come up, so if they don't like it, or it's going to be in their neighborhood, they can say, go away. We used to have somebody on that industrial development commission who lived down on South Uxbridge.
Oh, yes.
And there was a, there was an exclusive zone that he put around his, his house, I think went out for five miles. And, you know, nothing could come within that five miles.
Well, and I, exactly, that's my point. I mean, that the board, the commission was not bringing economic development to the town. So, I guess the challenge is to anybody sitting out there, if you want business to come into your town, you, you really believe in the business growth, then go into the town manager's office, fill out the talent bank, and get on that board, so that we can start to have a dialogue of individuals for the...
No, what it needs is the director of economic development to be proactive in finding out what the business community wants and needs, and how can we be hopeful to them, not throw up roadblocks and having, you know, a person pay 10 visits to town hall...
That's exactly the tag.
I agree. And let's get the, and motivate her to get that commission back up to do that.
The commission won't be a help carer.
I disagree.
Well, you can disagree, and it sounds nice, but I'm not talking Nuxbridge. Any town, anywhere, they, they all work the same way. There, there are people that come in town, they say they want to do something, but they're not well-suited for it. People who want to develop business are developing business. They're not sitting in a town hall office. People who sit in town hall offices want to go to these meetings at the Chamber of Commerce and have cocktails and watch a slideshow presentation, that's what they want to do.
Okay, then I guess the question, the question goes, then why do we even have that position? Why are we paying this salary?
It feels good, because it makes people feel good.
Why don't we just get rid of the...
I'll second that motion.
The...
I made the motion, I'll second it.
Make a motion to eliminate the position.
Fifty-seven thousand dollars.
You understand what I'm saying? Call it what it is, then. It's planning and inspections, and take away the economic development part of it, because that's not what you're doing then. And businesses want to come in and...
Our intention, the intention was not to hire a director of planning and inspection services. And if it's morphed into that, something is very, very wrong. We don't have the leadership in the front office that should have stopped that from happening.
Okay, so I, then I guess the question is, is there anything this board can do to correct that?
Yes. I second your motion to fire her.
Can we fire her?
Did you make a motion, I second it.
She's only appointed, she's not on the contract.
Okay, now, we, I'll talk about the same person here.
No, no.
The director of planning and economic...
Which is the town manager?
It's a town manager appointment, so can, can we fire her?
No, we cannot.
No, I didn't think we can.
No, you cannot. However, we did ask, I think, the town manager to reassess the position and to, for her to evaluate whether it's met her expectations and all, and, and give us an update.
Yeah, but it's her expectations, the same as her expectations.
Well, we can discuss that.
Exactly. It's, it's the basis for our discussion, and so...
Well...
None of it is, however. We've got a request here to get together on the 20th. That date does not work for me. I don't know if it works, what else works for everybody else.
I had it already consulted.
What day is that?
That was a Monday, but I...
There's no time request. Was that a daytime or an evening?
It's got to be evening, right? Keep doing days.
May 21st.
Well, the only reason why I asked that is because, isn't she present at conservation commission meetings, and that would, don't they meet like every other week? They just met tonight.
Uh, Uxbridge Business Association is meeting Tuesday night, the 21st. Wednesday, Wednesday looks to be open, but...
Mine's still in mind.
We'd be vying, maybe vying for meeting space, but I mean, that's at least, at least of our issues. So, we, we can counterpropose the 22nd, yeah. Or the 28th.
Third Wednesday?
Um, technically the 4th.
Okay.
I'll move my space somewhere, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, third Wednesday.
22nd or 28th, okay.
I guess I just, I raised the question, if we're, I mean, I get, if we've asked the town manager for an assessment of that position, and we haven't heard back from that, let's say the assessment is, the position is no longer needed, then why would we take the time to schedule a workshop?
Because we haven't had the answer yet.
Okay.
So, we'll schedule a workshop unless we get the answer.
But we're not going to get the answer before the 27th anyway, which is our next So, we want to defer the meeting with Megan until after the 27th.
We could.
That would, that would probably make more sense.
And then we request that we have a clear explanation of that position by the 27th.
Right.
Either the position be redefined or given a clear...
No, we don't want it redefined.
Well, I, I don't want to presuppose that yet. I mean, there, there may be some solution that is out there that is, looks different than it looks right now. Okay. Because if the answer is not to have an IDC, if the answer is not to redefine the position, then is the answer just to do nothing and let things come to us? No, that's clearly is not the answer. You know, you know, and, and...
Well, in reality, most things in fact do come to us, in every other town. You know, business finds a location that suits them.
But as far as, I mean, but as far as owning the marketing-esque aspects of business development, I mean, we do that in our day-to-day conversations with people, but to, you know, technically own that function, right now, that sits with Megan.
Well, that would be the importance of having a economic development commission.
That operates as one.
As, that operates as one, correct.
Okay. So, let's move on from this. I'll make sure that we have on the 27th agenda, a report from the town manager on her assessment of the position restructuring, and then we'll decide what we want to do with this, based on that.
Okay.
So, I'm going to be on that economic development commission, and let's see, I own a hardware store. I'm going to go out and try to find somebody else to come in and compete with me. Or I own a drugstore, I want to get two other drugstores to come in and compete.
Yeah, but maybe you own a hardware store, but, but you like coffee, so you want to bring Dunkin' Donuts to Hannaford Plaza. I mean, you know...
Or you have citizens who honestly believe that we need to expand the business section of our town, and they're volunteering their time, because they have business knowledge to achieve that, and they don't have a business in town. They're just out to improve the tax base in town.
And tell me how, tell me how they're going to do that. What are they going to do? Let's say that's your operation, what are you going to do?
Well, actually, I'll give you an example. My husband was on the business, he was the last member of that board.
Yeah.
Okay, when it was official board, he was the last sitting person, and when he learned that...
Last man standing.
He was the last man standing. And when he, when I came back one day and said, there's a petition in the North Bridge Walmart, they're having problems with it, he picked up the phone and called Walmart Corporate and got ahold of the attorneys, and actually had them in discussions to reevaluate coming to Uxbridge, which was their first choice. And they chose, because of the amount of money they already had invested in North Bridge, that they were going to go ahead and gamble with that whole site issue. But they honestly had told them, had you called us just 30 days earlier, we may have totally had a different view.
Now, you're saying Uxbridge was their first choice?
It was their first choice.
Well, why didn't they come here?
Because when they contacted the town at the time, they were told, we're not interested. Somebody in town hall told them they weren't interested, and instead of beating their head against coming someplace that they want to, they called North Bridge, and North said, come on in, we'd love to entertain what you have, what you want, but Uxbridge said no.
Well, in all my life, talking to business people and so forth, I've never had an occasion to call a town and say, you know, this is a town that, you know, I want to locate this enterprise in this particular town. I found the land is suitable for me, I've, I've looked at their zoning, I know I can do it in this land that I found, and it's suitable for me. I never, never had occasion to call someone that time and say, you know, can I come in?
Yeah, but you're not putting in a 300,000 square foot distribution facility, though, with all due respect, Peter. You know, I mean, you're running, you have a smaller...
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about not myself, you know, my clients.
I thought you were speaking...
No, 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 my clients. They would appear, they have everything done, and if they need a building permit, they They would appear, they have everything done, and if they need a building permit, they would say, here's the plans, I want the permit. You know, that's it.
That, I mean, they're...
Because real business people know that towns are not country clubs, they're not private social clubs where they can decide who they want to come into their town. That's not how it works.
But they make phone calls and they, they reach out with their contacts and they find out where are they going to have roadblocks and where is it going to cost them more money and where it isn't. They're going to contact other associations and say, hey, we're looking to come into this region.
We need to continue this discussion at, in November, if we could. Okay. All right, two things we need to get done, so very quickly. One is, there are a couple items, of course, ones I wanted to just call to the board's attention. We are posted now on the MMA website for the town manager position. We've had our first applicant, I will, as we discussed, hold all applicants through October 31st and distribute them to everybody all at once. Second thing is, just right before I came into this meeting, I stopped upstairs and I picked up my mail, and we do have a response from our legislative delegation relative to our request on the PEC and asking them to support...
PEC.
The Public Employees Committee that weighs in on whether we join the GIC or not. And I'll just, I'll make copies rather than editorialize at this point, but, okay. But, yeah, they were careful to point out that the final decision for, that we said that the final decision for participation in the GIC rests solely in the hands of the PEC, you know, and they point out, well, it doesn't, because it's a partnership between the PEC and the Board of Selectmen. But if the PEC says no, we're still powerless. So to me, that says that all that power rests in the hands of one party. You know, so I guess it's a matter of interpretation, but, so I'll leave it at that for now, but I'll make sure you guys don't get copies of this stuff so you can read.
Kevin, do you have the, do you have the copy of the vehicle policy that we just signed?
Uh, wait there.
I just want to get a copy of it.
Okay. You know, obviously a note on it for Kim to get a copy of.
Yeah, just put it in my box.
Okay. Well, actually, it'll be on file in the, in the policy book upstairs, too, so any day you're in here, you can shoot a copy.
Yeah, every day.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I just want a copy of it.
I'll let Kim know you want it.
Okay, you know, I want a copy of the vehicle policy.
I think that was it for the agenda item or the correspondence items, I needed to call the extension. And we already talked about date for the mediation meeting with the police union. It's on, is it the 14th or 15th we decided on?
Four months.
The mediation meeting with the police union, the 14th.
14th at 9:00.
9:00 to 10:00.
9:00 to 10:00. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor, but under correspondences, the issue with Dr. Lutton earlier, that was a correspondence in per se. Is there, is that going to be coming before the board from here?
Yeah, they were doing.
Oh.
Well, the point I made to Dr. Lutton when he was talking, I mean, I have a copy of the thing. I read it. There is nothing in there that tells me it needed to come before the Board of Selectmen. There are two parts of it. One is an ethics issue, which we don't deal with, that's dealt with in Ethics Office. The second part is the question whether or not there's a zoning violation.
Right.
Well...
But I think the inspector's already been out there.
That letter does not prompt this board to take an action. It needs the building inspector to go out and report back to us whether or not we need to take an action.
I think he's already been out there.
Then, you know, until such time as the building inspector...
There actually was a finding letter in the reading file as well.
Yeah, was there, okay, I missed that.
Yeah, just fairly recent, actually.
The only thing that should have been done, and we should do it in the future, is just respond to the correct, acknowledging receipt.
Right, yeah.
But there was not a receipt from Dr. Lutton. His concern is that none of us picked up the phone to tell him that he had it.
He was bonded by, you get the call from State Ethics Commission. And again, I tried to lay out the...
But that's not our fault.
Well, I mean, I tried to lay out the timeframe, that the letter was written, I think, on the 11th. It wasn't sent to me directly, it was sent here, placed in the reading file, but I don't even think it was mailed on the 11th, it was probably mailed on the 13th or something like that. And I wasn't even aware of the letter until I got an email saying, surely by now you've seen my letter. So at which point, the next day, I drove in to Town Hall by the letter, but, you know, and then three days, yeah, exactly, three days later, there was conversation between Jill and, and Mr. Lutton, so I feel bad about the breakdown, if he was surprised by anything, but, you know, I, you know...
Well, I guess, just as far as the correspondence, I mean, so, I mean, whether, whether... As far as the ethics standpoint, the way that I took it is, it's, you know, not knowing if it's an ethics violation, it's kind of like a complaint that, I mean, we should, I see as us members shouldn't be going off talking about things that may or may not, that either, one, we're going to deliberate on, or, two, something that we may not be involved in. So, I mean, I take it as, some of the things that are in the reading file, it's for our knowledge, and then the Chair and the Town Manager will let us know when those matters are coming before us, but...
But except that these letters were addressed to each of us individually. I got...
Individually would be something different, but we're, you know, this was something that was addressed not to one of us particularly.
That's right, we would give copies of a letter.
Correct, right, this was just kind of like an FYI.
Michael Barrow is the one that came in individually, not this one.
Oh, okay.
This one came in just to...
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, and that brings up the issue, right, and that's, I mean, is that the other one, the other complaint that was in the reading file, are we going to, is that going to be coming before us?
Well, that came to us individually, the one from Michael Barrow, that there was a discrepancy in the page count between the number of pages of documents he thought he was going to get and the number of...
No, no, not that, the other complaint.
Dr. Lutton again.
No, no, the other, wasn't there another?
Oh, private detective?
Correct.
Right. And the private detective that spoke at Citizens Forum?
He, he wrote a complaint, so is that, how...
There was no substance in the complaint.
I understand that, but have we acknowledged...
However, it was complaint, and I believe the current status was it was forwarded to our insurance company that handles those types of complaints. So, you know, staff took, brought great actions.
Okay, so I guess that's my question then. Therefore, there was action that was taken, but when would this board be notified? Because that was something that, that was an official complaint that came to us, and here, action has been taken, when would we get updated on it?
Yeah, but did you read it? I mean, the complaint is that...
It doesn't matter whether it was substantive or...
Evidence disappeared, but it didn't say, what disappeared? Something nebulous disappeared. How can you investigate something nebulous?
I understand what you're saying, Mike, I do, but my question is, is, one, somebody sent, a citizen sent us in something. So, A, we say, we have, we acknowledge receipt, and then we can respond with, we will take no action, or we can respond with, this is under investigation. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, you want, we want to respond.
We just want to know, like Kevin said, it's gone on to the insurance company. When would we have learned that? Had I not asked this question, when would that have been brought to us?
That's like the Wood file, the letter go out to the Capistrans on Sutton Street.
I don't know.
See, I'm wondering about that, too, because I never got anything to sign, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, obviously, I have no, like, agenda to hold or any reason to hold anything back from, from any member of this board.
No, I'm not saying, I mean, would it come from you or would it come from the town?
Well, that's the question, because, you know, am I to assume, when I get an FYI from the town manager, oh, by the way, we forwarded this to the insurance company, okay, you know, and actions are being taken, is there any other action necessary by me?
I guess then, the thing that's needed is to have a folder with two sites. Here's the incoming correspondence, here's the outgoing correspondence. And I think that would answer your requirement. You would see that there had been some action taken.
Yeah, that's a good point.
If that read file has outgoing correspondence as well as incoming.
That's right, this is the stuff coming in, this is the stuff going, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That way we know.
Right.
Put that in the notes as an action item for the town manager, that in the future we want the read file to have both incoming correspondence and outgoing correspondence.
Yeah, good point.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and some correspondence, we're talking about the zoning violation, there was, I saw a letter, and I think it was at the same place, the Wood Mile, not the Capistrans, the one...
Oh, the one on Hutter Ave.
Where there was a complaint, and the building inspector went out to look at it, and then Jill wrote a letter to the person telling them that they were in, you know, the building inspector found them in violation. At that time, the Board of Selectmen were in charge of zoning violations. So the letter should have gone on under the board's signature and not the town manager's signature. We have to, you know, keep distinction between things that are the board's and things of the town manager's. So our correspondence, we know, you know, this is our stuff, and we're responding, and this is, you know...
Do we then need two read files? Kind of in theory, like, there's a read file for stuff that we're to read for our meetings, and they're our agenda items, but then there's a read file of just FYI, it's never coming before you, so you know when you're reading it, this is just information, it's not going to come before you. You, you know, you may want to know what the follow-up is, and you look at the outgoing file, but we're not anticipating something. Does that make sense?
Too many files.
I understand that, but, I mean, because in my mind...
Because now we have our radar file now, too.
Yeah.
Is that X-stand or S-stand?
Yeah, I know.
And like, when I read this read file stuff, I, I personally don't know if it's stuff that's going to be coming on the agenda, and do I need to make note of it, or is it not? I don't always know.
Right.
Like, Dr. Lutton's a perfect example. I, I was thinking that was going to be something that we would...
That was on the original agenda.
Right, then it came off, right.
Then it came off.
But that was just in the general read files. You know what I mean? So there's stuff in the read file that hits the agenda, but then there's stuff in the read file that never does.
And the reason it came off is because, you know, the zoning-related aspects of that complaint were being investigated. So there was no action for this board to take at the time, and the ethics-related aspects of that were not our jurisdiction. So that's why it was not on the agenda. I understand that Mr. Lutton had a conversation with the town manager, saying he wanted to come in and clear his name, and which anyone is welcome to come to this informant if they, you know, feel they need to do so, and that's, that's why he was here tonight. You know, the, you know, the authors of the letter also had indicated that, you know, they may have shown up to, you know, voice concerns at Citizens Forum and chose not to. So, you know, we're going to have to look at these on a case-by-case, you know, example, you know, on a fair basis, rather, because, you know, one rule does not fit all, and we compared a million different files, and this is the may come into Citizens Forum and might require action file, and this is the, you know, and I don't want to get caught up in, you know, in that level of paralysis of analysis.
No, and I understand the Citizens, right, and the Citizens Forum stuff, it's just, if something is going to be in the...
If it's an FYI, like, for example, here's a commission that is meeting and the board is invited to attend, those types of communications, versus here is a request for public records that apparently was erroneously complied with and could conceivably end up on our table again. Right? That kind of gross level of distinction, right? Like, the FYI kind of things versus the...
Right.
Could require action. Okay.
Because there are some, right, exactly. Yeah, just so we have...
Don't make a motion to adjourn?
Actually, no, we, we need to address two items in executive session.
Oh, okay.
Or three, three items in the executive session. So...
That would draw a motion to go in the executive session to discuss...
Collective boarding updates.
Collective bargaining.
And discuss the Huttnack property and potentially Dougless Street, yes.
With no business happening.